We're a little early, but we're gonna get started. Well, welcome everybody to the May 2nd Council Meeting. We're called a meeting to order and Pastor Lee Davis, Meven Bible Church is gonna come up and pray with the invocation. Thank you, Sarah, for coming.
Absolutely, absolutely. Let's pray together. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you grateful for this city and how your grace has been shown across it, Lord. And Father, I want to thank you for this evening. Thank you for these folks who you have called to this position of City Council, Lord. And Father God, we want to lift them up to you, Lord, this evening. We ask that you would give them wisdom and discernment as they are trying to plot out the best possible path for the future of this wonderful city, Lord. So be with them this evening, Lord. Give them wisdom, Lord, like I said, and help them to make the best decisions for the people here in this town. And we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Sarah. Before we go to public comments, I have a statement I want to read. We have installed a new camera system in our chambers, which is really nice and up to date to allow the city to stream our meetings live to YouTube and other platforms as needed in the future. So please be patient with us as we transition to this new system over the next couple of months as items will need to be tweaked. I personally want to thank, and I want to counsel, we on the council want to thank the IT guys, Kirk. We have a retired guy back here too, Ed. Thank you for coming. Public Works, I mean Ray, excuse me, Public Utilities Department for their hard work in completing this project. And I want to thank you for completing it on time. And so we appreciate that. And we thank the staff for all they do. We have public comments, we have two signed up, but both of these are, the topic is on a public hearing. So do you want to talk on now to public comment or you want to wait to the public hearing? Stuart Smith. We have a public hearing on the Juneteenth paid holiday. Isaiah Keys. Excuse me. Okay, good. Okay. All right, moving on to consent agenda. We have the approval of our minutes on March 23rd, March 30th, April 4th, and April 13th, both regular meeting and budget work sessions. We have the final plat of Bowman Place Phase S2. We have the final plat of Tupelo Junction Phase 1. We have the new street naming and signage for NC Highway 119 relocation and Corregidor Drive Connector projects. And then the American Rescue Plan, the resolution authorized an increase in micro purchase threshold, records retention policy for the American Rescue Plan documents, non-discrimination policy per federal statutes, allowable cost and cost principles policy, and eligible use policy. Is there anyone on the council that has, would you like to discuss anything on our consent agenda?
I got, someone asked me about the street naming and were we gonna have signs that said 119 bypass and 119 business? And my response was, it's not a, it's not a 119 bypass and 119 business. It was a relocation project. So there won't be a sign that says 119 business. Is that correct?
Go ahead, Preston.
NCDOT officials have informed us, yes, there'll be, as you referenced, Mayor Bertin Bradley, there'll be one single 119, NC 119. And then the previous NC 119 route will become for the NCDOT a secondary road system and various city street names.
Any else on the council? If not, an entertaining motion.
So move.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda, but motion carries. Before we go to public hearing, I will tell my DOT in conversation with the D for the public. They have informed us that completion date of the road opening is by the end of May or sooner. And the question begs, what year? They didn't laugh. So we have that. And then a conversation I had with the DOT, they got some signs out at Mill Creek letting everybody know where Mill Creek, in case you miss it, they got some signs out there. So the DOT, and the third thing in discussions was the cleaning, the mowing and cleanup and that kind of stuff of our right of way. And they're making an attempt to do that. So hopefully we'll see it sometime before the end of May. So anyway.
Mayor, I'd just like to say appreciate your efforts on the sign of Mill Creek. And also, they were weed eating the bypass last Thursday and Friday, even Saturday, I believe. So I appreciate your efforts and working with DOT on it.
Mayor, can I follow up? There's been a lot of comment and talk about landscaping. NCDOT does have funds for landscaping of the project. However, they will be done by a separate contractor. They haven't even started the design or the planning for that. The existing grass has got to come in, get stabilized before they will release anybody else out there to do mowing or weed eating. But there is funding after the project is open, after they've taken complete acceptance of it, to then start a discussion about landscaping for the project.
Yeah, that was the fourth thing. I really appreciate you, and they were telling, one and a half percent of the project is on landscaping. So that is a sizable chunk.
Very significant.
We will be meeting with the landscaping people probably within the next 30, 60 days to discuss what to think. So anyway, enough about the bypass, and we hope it is in 2022. So go from there. All right, we're opening the public hearing. Our first public hearing is the Juneteenth Paid Holiday. Beatrice Hunter, our HR Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. All right, so at the at the last meeting that we had, you all proposed a motion for us, sorry, a motion carried for staff to draft a resolution establishing Juneteenth as a paid holiday, schedule a public hearing for discussion and input, and present a brief historical perspective on Juneteenth at this meeting. And so staff is prepared with those items today. The historical perspective will be presented by Dr. Irish Chapman. And once I've gone through my slides, I will present her to you. So the getting accustomed to this new system. So the city currently observes 12 holidays. So it's actually nine holidays paid over 12 days because we do observe two days for Thanksgiving and three days for Christmas. And so you can see there what our current holidays are right now. And if we were to make a comparison of paid holidays with federal and state, you will see that the federal government observes 11 days as paid holidays, and those are 11 actual holidays. They observe one day per holiday. And then the state of North Carolina recognizes 12 days holidays, and that's two days for Thanksgiving and three days for Christmas. And Meven happens to follow that same schedule. There are many municipalities and jurisdictions that are observing Juneteenth as a celebratory day as well as a paid holiday. And so you can see in Alamance County, the town of Elon, the town of Green Level, and the town of Gibsonville have, that is a paid holiday. And then Orange County, Orange County, the town of Hillsborough, the town of Carboro, the town of Chapel Hill, and then Owassa also observe Juneteenth as a paid holiday. I would also mention that the school systems, Orange County School System, as well as Chapel Hill, Carboro Schools also observe Juneteenth as a paid holiday for their staff. And then you can see there below, there are other places east and west of us that observe Juneteenth as a holiday. So I wanted to bring those items to your attention. At the last meeting, Councilmember White did talk about the celebration that we may have, and that, of course, it's two different things in terms of a celebration as well as a paid holiday. The day following the meeting, the Juneteenth Planning Committee did meet, and they determined that they would have a celebration on June 19th if Juneteenth was on a Saturday. And then any other day, then it would be on the Saturday preceding Juneteenth. And so this is a collaboration with community partners and with the city. Okay. And so I will go ahead and bring up Dr. Chapman. So Dr. Chapman is one of our own. She lives right here in Meven. She retired as a professor emeritus at Elon University, and she was the first African-American PhD on faculty at Elon University. A few highlights from her career include taking college students to Ghana, West Africa as a coordinator of one of Elon University's study abroad programs. She coordinated the first-year writing program, and she produced the award-winning film Life and Times of the Fiddler Joe Thompson. She's also created and presented highly regarded workshops on the development of the Black church and has edited a deceased friend's memoir, Outliving Your Disease. And so she is very active here in the Meven community. She serves on the Meven Museum Board of Directors and is now the president of the Alamance Relentance Schools Closing Achievement Gap Board. And so without further ado, I'll bring up Dr. Chapman.
Good evening.
To the mayor and other Thank you. Good afternoon to the mayor and all of the council members and the city manager. It is only fitting and proper, I think, to say a little bit or to cite a little bit from the Emancipation Proclamation. Because to me, that's where Juneteenth comes from, or it led to Juneteenth. And Abraham Lincoln wrote this in 1862, and it became law And Abraham Lincoln wrote this in eighteen sixty-two, and it became law eighteen sixty-three. And he says that on the first day of January, in the year of our Lord, one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three, "All persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state, the people whereof shall then be in rebellion against the United States, shall be then theirsforth and forever free. And the executive government of the United States, including the military and naval authority thereof, will recognize and maintain the freedom of such persons and will do no act or acts to repress such persons or any of them in any efforts they may make for their actual freedom." And there's a lot, of course, to that proclamation, but I just wanted to give some context for that, for the eighteen sixties in America regarding slavery. This proclamation is perhaps one of the most important documents leading the way to Juneteenth. See, up to eighteen sixty-two, the main focus of the Civil War was to preserve the Union. You know, all of you had history like we did, and, and that was, that was the deal. That was what we were told. But this proclamation, the main focus of this, was, was the main focus of the Civil War was to, but with President Lincoln, I'm sorry, issuing that proclamation, freeing the slaves became a legitimate end and aim of the Civil War. But it would be April eighteen sixty-five, two years later, before that proclamation, before the end of the Civil War. So, and even with the North winning the Civil War, it still took two more months before slavery was outlawed or abolished in the United States. And as our kids would say, what happened was, on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Major Gordon Granger, a commanding general of the Union forces, he was headquartered in Galveston, Texas, prepared a General Order Number Three, declaring, and I quote, "The people of Texas are informed in accordance with a proclamation from the executive of the United States." And you see that's coming from President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, that all slaves are free. Somehow Texas had not gotten the news, or it was purposely not shared with the slaves before eighteen sixty-five. Anyway, that special event in Texas, which occurred on June nineteenth, ninth, eighteen sixty-five, marks the date that the last slaves in the United States were freed. And that date, June nineteenth, was called then Juneteenth. Juneteenth is a contraction of the two words, June and nineteenth. So that's, that's how you get the word. Thus, the new word is Juneteenth. And it has now evolved into an annual celebration in many places in the United States. I was reading Maggie Morehouse's dissertation on Juneteenth. And she's, she calls it a festival of freedom. I think that's so apropos for a day to remember the end of chattel slavery in America. Although African-Americans have historically celebrated several different days that marked the end of slavery, Juneteenth has become now the preeminent festival day in modern times. And I think that's because Texas, when Texas passed that state holiday, some say eighteen seventy-nine, I mean nineteen seventy-nine or nineteen eighty, it was one of those times that, that they had, they caught, proclaimed, or got a state holiday in Texas. And that's when that Juneteenth, I think most people around the country now are beginning to say Juneteenth. Because you have to think about this, people were getting the word at different times. So they was all celebrating this, this freeing of the slaves at different times. Today, Juneteenth is celebrated all across America within the black community. Last year, President Biden signed a bill establishing Juneteenth as a federal holiday commemorating the end of slavery in the United States. But that doesn't mean the states and cities went along with it, you know? Even though many states and the District of Columbia have passed legislation recognizing it as a day of observance, in Texas, New York, Virginia, Washington, and Illinois, Juneteenth is an official paid holiday for state employees. Finally, then is now, the Juneteenth celebrations usually going to include music and food and preaching and some sort of speech or proclamation by a government official. So, and a lot of times they include African-influenced music and African dance. It's kind of like a remembrance of the time that they were in slavery. You also may find African-American rapping, dancing, and signifying at these festivals as well. So what I've tried to do is synthesize what this holiday is, try to define what it is, how it came about, and, and you guys, all of us in this room have an opportunity to, to say where it's going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glad to have you here tonight.
Are there any questions for me before you all?
Councilmember, any questions?
Those municipalities, county governments listed, even looks like a, was it a what? Orange Alamance Water System? For their Juneteenth, did they swap a day or did they add a day?
From what I found, jurisdictions added a day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Well, it is a public hearing, and we'd like to hear from the, from the audience. Please state your name and address and
Good evening, everyone. My name is Will McChris. I reside at one ten Faust Road, Meven, North Carolina. And on behalf of the committee, I'd like to take, and take this opportunity to speak to each of you this evening regarding that consideration to honor the federal holiday, Juneteenth. Ms. Hunter stated at the last month's committee meeting that honoring this federal holiday would cost the city forty-eight thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars. Mr. Bradley said at the last meeting that he didn't feel that the council had received enough adequate public input to make a decision to honor Juneteenth. But could someone please give a breakdown of exactly how Ms. Hunter arrived at forty-eight thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars? And why is the community input needed to follow federal directions? It sounds like the city council is looking for an excuse to not to follow the federal law. Having picnics, food trucks, and vendors in, in the parks celebrating Juneteenth is a bone thrown to the black community. Slavery was alive and well right here in Meven, North Carolina, for hundreds of years. So we need you as a council to be willing to educate yourselves and the community about the importance and the significance of what Juneteenth is and why we should care. We were educated in school about why we celebrate the Fourth of July and Memorial Day. So why not spend some of that forty-eight thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars on the community's education? The citizens of Meven need you to help them understand. Most don't. Educating, celebrating, and honoring Juneteenth is once, many, of many steps that the city of Meven could take to celebrate the meaningful way. No more bones. We don't need no more bones. Let the city of Meven be the leader in Alamance County in honoring this important federal day. Thank you.
Next speaker? Anybody else? Excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. And thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak tonight. A member of the Meven RIAC Committee, and I take my responsibilities to that committee serious. And I joined that committee because I had a sincere belief that we needed to better ourselves as a community, me to grow as a person, and for us all to learn as we go forward. I speak tonight in support of making Juneteenth a, a holiday, a paid holiday. And I hope that many people like myself will research the holiday and really look at the reason that it has been established as a federal holiday. I, I look at the, the date that the Juneteenth was established, and I look back at the history of it. But I also think about the many friends that I have that are African-American friends who have shared with me some of the struggles that they have had or some of the life experiences. And they felt close enough to me that they could share and, and feel comfortable. Couple of years ago, when the Eastern Alamance Girls won the softball championship for three A for the state of North Carolina, we had a, we, we honored them one night at a football game at halftime, the community did. As I was sitting in the, on the field in my lawn chair, there was an elderly gentleman sitting beside of me. And when I say elderly, you look at me, he must have been old, and he was respectfully. It was a black gentleman, and I have difficulty sitting beside somebody without striking up a conversation. And I asked him, I said, do you have anyone that's on the, that, that's on the team? He said, I have a granddaughter. And he's, he said, he said a few remarks, and I, I engaged him in conversation. And we started talking about our work history. And he explained to me that he retired from Burlington Industries. He was a truck driver. And I said, well, I had my CDL too. I said, we've got something in common. And one word led on, one, one word led to another. But he told me, he said, when I got out of the military, and he said, I came back home, he said, I couldn't get a job. He said, they were not hiring any black people in the, in the local textile mills. He said, the government had a program, and he said, I got a job as a truck driver. And as I sit there and, and listen to him tell me that, you know, you can read history books all you want to. But it's a little different when you've got somebody there that's flesh and blood, and, and they're engaging you in conversation, and they're sharing those most sentiment thoughts. I was like, you know, I, I was a little bit taken aback, even though we all know about it, but I thought about it, and I thought about the struggles of, of some, some ethnicities in our, in our world and, and how our yesterdays, that we can't go back and undo things, but we can change our demorals. And we can chart a path for a better tomorrow. And I think it would start, I think that Meven is a leader in Alamance County. I think you, you folks are, I hold you in, in very high esteem for the way you run the, the city. And I would love for Meven to be the first one in Alamance County to establish Juneteenth as a, as a holiday. And I thank you for an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Stuart. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Erica Blueford. I live at fifteen sixty-five Grace Landing Drive, and I'm also a member of the RIAC Committee. I believe that a lot has already been said, and you have the information about which local governments have already made Juneteenth a paid holiday. So I just want to highlight a couple of things. Number one, that we already celebrate July fourth as a paid holiday, although we know that all people were not made free on July fourth. And so I think that surely if we celebrate July fourth as a paid holiday, we should be able to do the same for Juneteenth when we know that everyone was made free. Additionally, I did read in the proposed resolution about how Juneteenth is a holiday that is significant to African-American people. And I just want to highlight that this should be a holiday that is significant to all Americans as it signifies the official end of slavery, one of this nation's greatest atrocities. An atrocity that's residue continues to impact citizens in this country as well as citizens in this great city of Meven. Slavery is a part of American history, which means that the end of slavery being Juneteenth should also be a part of American history. I remember when I was in elementary school, we sang a song, and I went to Garrett Elementary, right down, right down the street. We sang a song that went, "I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me." And while I was proud to sing that song then, I later realized that it might not have applied that well for people who looked like I do. And so I would agree with Ms. Crisp and my fellow RIAC member, Mr. Smith, who said that Meven should be able to take the lead in Alamance County and also in this state, who I don't believe recognized Juneteenth as a paid holiday at this particular moment. I think that recognizing Juneteenth as a paid holiday for the city of Meven is one step to acknowledge that the abolition of slavery is indeed significant to the heritage of our city, as was written in the proclamation by our mayor in the city of Meven for Juneteenth last year. And also recognizing Juneteenth as a paid holiday will show that the city of Meven cares about the freedom of all Americans, those who experience freedom on July fourth, and those who had to wait until Juneteenth or June nineteenth to experience their freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Isaiah Reyes, and I live on three oh four Stratford Drive here in Meven. And I will do my best to address the elephant in the room in less than three minutes. I'm here to ask you to add Juneteenth as a paid holiday in addition to the holidays already observed by the city of Meven. And I won't speak about how I believe that the point of fiscal responsibility is to be able to reward the hard work of the people who helped build up Meven and our nation. Since Meven has done such a great job of running the city with a balanced budget and significant savings year after year, it goes without saying that this hard work should be rewarded. And I won't speak about how Meven is a leader in Alamance County for being the first county government, local government, that established a racial equity committee. It should naturally follow that we should recognize Juneteenth as an additional holiday as other local governments have done. I won't even talk about how this is a potential draw for employers. As we all know, this is incredibly competitive market for hiring and retaining workers. I would like to take a minute to salute Chief Caldwell for his efforts to hire a diverse workforce that is truly representative of all the people here in Meven, especially because we all know how hard it is right now to navigate the relationship between community and the police. I will speak in recognition of Meven's checkered history in race relations and on the impact of implicit bias. Stay with me here, because I know implicit bias trainings can take over three hours, and I've got less than three minutes. I know Meven has a history of not recognizing the impact on minority neighborhoods. This is reflected in how long it took to finish the one nineteen bypass, to how hard it is to get historical recognition for slave and Native American sites. By recognizing Juneteenth as an additional paid holiday, the city of Meven takes a stance to say that they recognize and value the contributions and efforts of African-American citizens that for so often goes unrecognized. And you might ask why I, as a Filipino woman, would stand up here to ask for recognition of Juneteenth? And I'll tell you why. Implicit bias matters. Most people ask me where I'm from, not realizing that the question itself tells me that they don't recognize me as an American first. They look at me and they see someone who wasn't born here. That is what implicit bias means to me, that no matter how long I live here and how much I erase the accent from my voice, people will not see me as American first. I've stopped being angry at this question. And honestly, I answered as quickly as possible so we can move on to the real conversation of how we do better. so we can move on to the real conversation of how we do better. As an Asian American, I want to recognize the historical significance of that term. It was coined in the 1960s as part of a multiracial coalition that fought to successfully establish the first College of Ethics in the United States. I want to recognize why my parents came to the U.S. for the hope of a better life. I'm asking my council members here today to support an additional holiday in recognition of Juneteenth for the city of Meben employees as part of the process to build a more perfect union. Thank you.
My name is Keisha Blueford. I reside at 1565 Grace Landing Drive in the big city of Meben, North Carolina. I am excited to be here tonight. Just to say, number one, that I appreciate the council giving an opportunity for public comment. When I listened to the last session that you all had, it just made me feel like you wanted to make an informed decision, but I appreciate the fact that what I heard sounded like, the comments that were given would have me to believe that you're already in support of adopting Juneteenth as a holiday. That's the impression that I got from the, the comments that I heard, and so if that's actually the case, then I do appreciate that. Here on behalf of React, I'm a co-chair for React, wanted to say, given that the Emancipation Proclamation did not, at least initially, lead to freedom for all, even Juneteenth, I don't believe that that led to freedom for all, but more so than the Emancipation Proclamation. So if it more so led to freedom for all, I do not believe that it should be given any less reverence than July 4th. So I think that if July 4th sets the bar, then Juneteenth should be given that same treatment, so I do believe that it should be a paid holiday. I will say that I enjoyed the festivities that we had here in my city. Last year, I participated in those, I spoke at that, my church, Grace Outreach Ministry did sing at the Juneteenth festivities that we had at Holt Street Park last year, but I'm on the Juneteenth Committee with Mr. Aaron Davis, and I'm excited to know that the city itself is even more involved than we were last year, so that makes a big statement to me, that you all actually have a committee that's been established, and we can, I think it was open for most to be able to join the committee, so that makes a big statement to me and I believe for this community. I do believe that it will make a huge statement to this community, the residents of this city, that you do value the freedom and justice for all people if you will decide to have Juneteenth adopted as a holiday, not just a holiday, but a paid holiday for the city of Meben. So hopefully, we will be spearheading that and showing the rest of these surrounding counties, surrounding cities, what they should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you all are well. I'm Travis Albrecht, and I reside at 1203 Burke Dale Circle in the great city of Meben, North Carolina, and I stand before you as a co-chair of React. So the question of Juneteenth as a paid holiday for the, for the employees of Meben, I can't help but reflect on July 4th, and how we celebrate it every year. But we celebrate July 4th in terms of our celebration and independence from Britain. Unfortunately, that celebration does not encompass, if you want to get this side, it's my good side, anyway, that, that celebration does not encompass so many people who are already here on these shores of these yet-to-be United States of America. And so here we have Juneteenth as an opportunity to celebrate the liberation of the black and brown bodies who were enslaved in this country for over 400 years. And so for me, it's not even a question of what we should do. It's a question of why did it take so long? And so I stand before you today encouraged by the fact that we are having this conversation, encouraged by the fact that I believe that you all are going to do the right thing, and that Juneteenth is going to be a paid holiday for the employees of Meben, North Carolina. But more importantly, I stand before you to say that even if you vote in favor of Juneteenth, that is only a small part of the foundation of what we need to do to set forth an agenda that will achieve racial justice, not just for this town, but also for this country that we all say we love so much. Somehow, I believe that Meben can be an exemplar of what it is that we can do right in terms of government. I believe that Meben can be an exemplar and show other towns and municipalities what it is that needs to happen in order to move the conversation forward. No doubt, there might be some in this room who would disagree with making Juneteenth a holiday, but I would say to those individuals, it is time for us to move forward in ways that will allow us to be proactive and productive by acknowledging the true freedoms that all of us have. So the question becomes, do we really hold these truths to be evident? Right? Are we all created equal under God? Is this really the land of the free and the home of the brave? Certainly tonight, I believe that you all are going to be brave and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else? All right, if not, I think, yes, sir.
Questions, not a comment on the, on the underlying issue. What I'm unclear on, and Ms. Crisp mentioned it, last month, the background material to the council said that the estimated cost for a, an additional holiday in form of Juneteenth would be $48,145. That's what she quoted, I believe that's correct, what was in the package. This month, though, I'm curious, because it says the financial impact is none, and I do not understand how it can be none, an additional city holiday.
So I'll step up and take blame for that, and won't ask anybody else to answer that question.
Which one, now or then?
Both, actually. So last month, before the meeting, comments or questions were asked, what is the cost of a days of pay? So in the city of Meben, that number is roughly right under $50,000. Obviously, we budgeted to pay everybody that day, and so as we were rethinking again this month, I talked to Ms. Hunter and said, "I don't anticipate us paying overtime for a new holiday if the council decides to give a new holiday. Our staff works very hard on all the other holidays when they happen on a weekday, and we figure out how to get it done. We generally do not pay overtime to get it done." So as we reflected further, I said, "I don't really think there is a $50,000 impact." Yes, there is an impact to services that aren't done that day. I don't know how on earth I would put a number to that, but it's the same as every other holiday we have. So we spoke about it, I said, "I don't think that that's clear, and there is a $50,000 impact, but that is the cost of one day of work in Meben."
Well, Ms. Mayor, I understand sort of the end of the statement, but I don't understand still the listing that it says none, and in particular, the logic that said there'll be none, and the manager referenced it a little bit, which it states in writing in the agenda packet, "City has budgeted to pay the full year of wages for full-time workers, whether paid or paid as regular hours or as holiday hours," and that seemed to be the point, sort of, that you were making. But Ms. Chairman, Ms. Mayor, with that kind of logic, you could establish lots and lots of holidays, and it'd be no cost at all. It just doesn't seem reasonable to assume there is no cost. If the assumption is that it's $50,000 or more or less dollars a day for the city employment payroll, and then, yes, you're going to add one, then that would seem to be a true cost. But it seems to me, the transparency that I'm interested in is on the budgetary front, on what is the cost to the taxpayers of Meben, and it seems to me that cost is more truly what you stated last month in the packet, as close to $50,000 rather than none.
Good, good. Thank you, Tom. Okay, if nobody else in the, in the audience would like to speak, we do have some, are we gonna read these comments that we received? No, okay, all right, we all, we all got comments through Info City of Meben, so we all got those, so.
Just for reference, Mr. Mayor, how many comments, how many emails do we get? Six emails.
Okay. Any, any further discussion from the council?
Mayor, this is a public, is in schedule, is a public hearing, so you probably need to close the.
Yeah, Wes was getting ready. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My God, it's, we have a motion to close. Got a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
What is the pleasure of the council?
June 19th, 1865, known as Juneteenth today. This is two and a half years as Dr. Iris Chapman, I'm sorry, 1865, my apologies, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation, after the last peoples were freed from bondage. Not until sometime in the last five years did I myself become aware of the significance of Juneteenth, and not only that, Black Wall Street massacre, modern textbooks still referring to slaves as family, textbooks from the 70s depicting slaves' life as, and I quote, "one of the happiest ways of life." We have an opportunity to lead into, lean into this moment of Meben history and say yes. Meben is positively charming. We do recognize the significance of this day of freedom. Romans 12:15, "Rejoice with those who rejoice," and I hope we as Mebanites rejoice. And that's the crux of the matter, is freedom, literally the freedom of a people. There should be no compromise, there should be no concessions made in the name of people's freedom. And fellow city council members, I'm glad we have a great turnout today, I'm so thankful for it. I hope we can continue to branch out, find out what other constituents want to hear, because not everyone's going to be able to come to us on a day as significant as this. Furthermore, I think this is a perfect time that we can lean into our slogan, positively charming. Meben needs not only to be charming, but on the right side of history for this day. I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Juneteenth as an additional Meben paid holiday. I ask for a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would, I'd just like to make one comment, Mr. Mayor, and when I called for a public hearing last month, I think the exact wording was, the only input we had had from concern in this holiday had not come from the public, but it'd come from a council member, and I thought it was important to involve the public. In fact, my comment was that I thought it would give us an opportunity to educate the community and ourselves about what this holiday means. Just want to clarify that.
Good, thank you.
May I just say, too, I wanted to thank everyone that came out and made comments. I was hoping that we would get more community input, especially with me being new. I'm still learning everyone, and it's hard to make a decision, especially when we haven't had any community input, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, I second that, I think that's very important, and I, we want to cultivate that more here in Meben, having you all involved in, in as many meetings and as many decisions as possible, so I'm very encouraged by this.
I thank you all as well for coming out, and this gives us a great opportunity to unify our community and move forward. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Thanks, everybody. All right, the next public hearing is the ordinance to extend the corporate limits of Leo Terra Meben LLC Hallfield Landing, and that's been requested to be continued into the June 6th, 2022, meeting for the applicant. The next item on the public hearing is.
Well, Mayor, you need to take a vote on that, since it is a public hearing, it has been advertised as such.
We have.
Set it over to next month.
We have been requested to continue into June 6th.
Motion to continue the ordinance to extend the corporate limits of Terra Meben LLC to June 6th.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lawson. All right, Mr. Stover?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I do have before you a variance request to allow a side yard accessory structure at 1206 Castle Pines Drive by Catherine Saliga. As a variance request, this is a quasi-judicial matter before the Board of Adjustment, and I would also note, per review of the city's UDO, it, we now understand the UDO to direct us to have the Board of Adjustment only be the city representatives to consider variance requests, so the Board of Adjustment will be the council this evening.
All those that will speak tonight need to come up and be sworn in.
So, Mr. Stover, that's when the item is in the city?
Yes, sir.
And when it's outside of the city in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the other members are invited to attend?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, it would be appropriate to enter in the record any comments that, any conversations that you may have had with anyone, and confirmation that the decision you make tonight will be based upon the evidence you hear that is sworn testimony under oath.
I have had no discussion with anyone, so my mind is not made up, nor do I vote.
I've not had any discussions, nor have I made up my minds.
I had a brief conversation with staff, but I've not made up my mind on this matter.
No conversations or pre-bios.
No conversations had and no decisions made.
I also had a brief conversation with staff, but I have not made up my mind or made a decision.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thank you for your time this evening. I want to just briefly go over what a variance request is. This is pulled from the general statute. When unnecessary hardships result from carrying out the strict letter of a zoning regulation, the Board of Adjustment shall vary any of the provisions of the zoning regulation upon a showing of all the following. And that is that the, the, that the hardship would result from the strict application of the regulation is not necessary to demonstrate that no reasonable use can be made of the property if the variance is not approved, that it's peculiar to the property, that this is not a commonality you find throughout the whole city. That the hardship did not result from any actions that the property owner took to create a hardship, that you did not grade your property, so all of a sudden you have a floodplain, for example, on your property where none previously existed, and that it is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulation, our Unified Development Ordinance, such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved. So as with prior variance requests, I'll provide you with the findings of fact, as you note in your packet, staff does not make a recommendation on a variance, it is between, it is up to the testimony of the applicant to provide the board with burden of proof and hardship that you would make a determination on whether or not to grant the variance. The request comes from Catherine Saliga, who is here this evening for the property at 1206 Castle Pines Drive. The property is owned R10, single-family residential, it is in Governor's Green, and it's surrounded by single-family residences and then a large R20 lot just outside the city limits to the east. The Unified Development Ordinance requires all accessory structures to be placed in the rear yard, and as you can see here, there are additional requirements for swimming pools, which must, must meet all principal building rear and side yard setbacks. As you can see here, this is the plot plan that Ms. Saliga provided to staff. I'm going to try out a fancy new feature of our new clickers. Oh, shoot, there it was. Give me one moment. Okay. First try. So you'll see here that there is a fifteen-foot drainagement through Ms. Saliga's backyard. And then here you can see the thirty-foot rear setback to her yard. That will leave either this minor stretch of her rear yard available for the swimming pool or this very small wedge here for a swimming pool, which would be fairly detached from the house and is is quite small. So that really limits the ability to realize nearly any accessory structure in the rear yard.
Uh, from the picture, it looks like even without the drain achievement, there wouldn't be enough room to, if you observe the thirty-foot setback.
If you took the rear property line and brought it all the way over, Mr. Bradley, there may be room in this triangle here to put something, we think. But the drainage man really disrupts all any chance of doing that if you're to come straight down.
Well, it's it's sort of important because I mean, if you don't have room because of setbacks, then that's a lot different from not having room because of a drainage achievement.
Yes, sir, I agree. Yeah, if the drainage wasn't there, I think there may be room for a pool in the rear yard. Yes. With that, I'll I'll turn it over to Ms. Saliga to make her case.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. The picture that he had a, I just pushed this a little bit. Okay. The little, on the right side of the house, behind the easement, that little triangle in there is a big hill that it isn't even accessible to use freely for anything because it goes straight up. The only portion that I do have to put a pole in would be on the side yard where I have a slide here that shows the biggest portion of it would be in the back part. It doesn't go anywhere near the front part of the house. I drew, well, painted where I would put the pole in the the shape. I've already talked to Faust Construction about the design of the pole. He won't even come look at it until I get approval by you. But if the biggest part, the widest part of the pool would be in the back. It depends on what you consider the back. But I'm going to show you a different angle where you can see the width of the pool right there is more or less in the, towards the back of the house. So the small portion that's on this actual side is like half of the pool. That is the side of where the garage is and a part portion of my bathroom that there would be nothing there other than the fence. That's kind of giving you, that's me showing you the distance between the fence. And you can still see the white line where it would be, the pole would be. That's the design of the pool. And then I would be putting up a fence that you cannot see through. There would be not those little panels. And I want to put a clear across the front, down the side, and partial in the back with a chain of fence in the back. But there really is not any room to put a pole in the back or up on the hill that is behind the easement where the water drainage is. Anybody have any questions about the design?
Nope, don't think so.
I appreciate you hearing me out.
Is is anybody in the public would like to make any comments?
Hi, I'm Marlo Countess. I'm a local realtor, and I reside in the city of Meben. When, first of all, Kathy lived in a beautiful home with a pool, and she gave up her home to come take care of her mother, who was living in that home. I know a pool's not actually a hardship, but Governor's Green does not have a pool, and she has grandkids, and she wants her grandkids to come hang out with her and build the pools. Well, Grandma does that. As for property values, a pool will not hurt her property value. It will actually help her property value. She found another home that recently closed in Governor's Green with an above-ground pool, and it closed for sixty-six thousand over list price. So obviously, the pool was a big drawing feature there. And then also, before Kathy ever came to you, she asked me to find her a home in Meben with a pool because she wants to stay in Meben. There's been one since she asked me, and that was probably three months ago. And it sold for fifteen thousand over asking, and it's five hundred square feet smaller than hers and needed about fifty thousand dollars worth of work. So I do think she would be, she she will have a beautiful pool. She'll take care of it, have a nice fence, and she will not be a nuisance to her neighbors, and they would be here complaining if they thought she would be. So thank you for your time.
All right, any any further comments from the audience? You have any other comments? Okay, all right. If the council doesn't have any comments, need a motion to close the public. Here. So move. You have a motion?
Second.
That was second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance request as presented due to hardships present on this property.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any any other further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Thank you, Si. Next on the agenda is the Meben Town Center. That concludes all our public hearings.
Yes, sir. I'm here before you tonight to ask for action to dedicate a right-of-way plat for Meben Town Center. The plat had was previously approved by the city council at the November first, twenty twenty-one meeting. That approval expired after ninety days, which is the requirement in the unified development ordinance of all plats. So it is back on the agenda this evening. That plat will formally open the right-of-way for Bonanza Lane and Beechcraft Drive. We anticipate a dedication, similar dedication plat to open up Cameron Lane to provide a connection to Meben Oaks Road at the June sixth meeting of the city council. Opening, dedicating these plats will allow for the plating of one hundred thirty-three additional townhomes at Meben Town Center. The council approval of Meben Town Center had originally four phases or has four phases. The project is currently in phase T one. A one preceded it, which is two apartment structures that face inward towards what is commonly known as Keystone Phase Two, the apartment that is entirely an apartment complex. Phase T one included a road widening project and a traffic signal installation. Article two, section nineteen of the Meben Unified Development Ordinance allows for bonding of features and amenities in cases where because of weather conditions or other factors beyond the control of the developer, there needs to be a delay in delivery of those amenities or features. The North Carolina DOT was a significant factor in the delay of traffic installation, traffic signal installation and road widening at this site. You are probably very aware that at Faust Road at the entry to the Villas on Fifth Road was recently widened. DOT basically told the developer, one project at a time, we don't want to have massive congestion through that entire corridor. There's also been supply supply chain challenge, supply chain challenges, which you referenced the bypass project before, Mr. Mayor. Those have also been a challenge for nearly all projects that we've seen in the city. And then an additional unexpected and positive development is that the developer constructed the entire internal road network for the townhomes out of sequence, but in a way that allows for access to Meben Oaks Road and does not rely solely upon Meben Airport Road and Bonanza Lane for access to one nineteen, which will relieve those driveways or access points from being the primary points of entry to the development. I have up here the T one construction plans, which are a little bit difficult to to read. These were the approved plans, but they show the fifty-five townhomes that were approved for this initial phase of development, along with the widening plan for South Fifth Street or North Carolina one nineteen. And the traffic signal installation is shown there at the intersection of Meben Airport Road or London Lane and North Carolina one nineteen. So the staff is proposing as next steps that the North Carolina DOT has estimated the cost of traffic signal installation and road widening at six hundred thousand dollars. That bond would need to be posted with North Carolina DOT prior to any apartment construction for the development, and that townhome construction may continue due to the provision of the internal road network once those plats are dedicated and any relevant bonds, such as the top coat of paving, are posted with the city. You can see here the the pace of the construction development on site. The apartments in brown are those that are the A one apartments that are internally facing as part of Keystone Phase Two. The apartments in yellow are the two that have been approved or been given permits and are under construction, but have not been issued certificates of occupancy. And then there are five unbuilt and unpermitted apartments. That would be directly dependent upon posting of a bond for the traffic signal. This illustration may show it a little bit better. You kind of have to pivot your perspective a little bit. But let's see, yeah. South Fifth Street or one nineteen is here, and this is roughly phase T one. And then you've got the the two existing apartments and then the two that are under construction, and then the five remaining apartments here. So the action that we're requesting tonight is approval of the plat, but I'm also happy to answer any questions before the council.
We, when we approved this development, I mean, we were, we were pretty specific about the phasing in the traffic light. I mean, the intent was to get the traffic light there before the traffic. So, I mean, with all this construction, the traffic light's going to be there after the traffic. If, and I, you know, the bond sounds wonderful, but I don't hear many people call me about bond, but I have a lot of people call me about traffic. So what, when, what are they going to do, when are they going to do the lanes and put the light in?
Yes, sir. So we've spoken with the developer, and he is here this this evening as well, and maybe can provide further details. But the the right-of-way has been staked, the signal has been approved, the signal program has been approved by DOT, and all the engineering for the widening and the traffic signal have already been approved as well by the city and DOT. The work clearly has not yet begun. But in our discussions with the developer, Scott Wallace of Keystone Homes, their anticipation is to do the work in the coming year. That's correct. Easements have been staked but not obtained at this time.
The stakes have been what?
The easements have been, the stakes have been placed in the ground denoting right-of-way and easements that are needed, but none of, none of those easements at this time have been obtained.
What would prevent, I mean, construction a quarter of a mile up the road doesn't prevent someone from obtaining easements.
Yes, sir.
So why are we sitting here with the this phase almost complete, and the easements haven't even been garnished when the light and intersection was supposed to be done before the phase was started? Something's not jiving here. I mean, I, if the, if the project planner's here, I'd like to hear what the comments are for that.
I don't think. Is anybody here, Keystone?
Good evening. My name is Scott Wallace. I'm president of Keystone Group Keystone Homes. With our office address is at three seven oh eight Alliance Drive in Greensboro, two seven four oh seven. So thank you for your consideration. Thanks for your questions. We have, we have not procured easements for the traffic signal, and we have staked the whole road right away. We're amidst getting, we're again, amidst getting quotes now for the widening and the traffic signal project. We are, we, a year ago, plus or minus, we reached out and started trying to get easements for the property. And we, when we were told by DOT that they didn't want us to do the project last year, we kind of just pulled away from that. Probably wasn't the best decision, but part of that decision is based on we were getting pushed back from one of the property owners. And so we were looking at redesigning the stoplight, the traffic signal post, if you will, because we understand that we're able to go with a more expensive steel post that will allow us to work within the current easements. However, without the selections of a traffic signal contractor, the actual specific contractor that we want to work with or our prime will work with, since they have the knowledge of knowing how the traffic signal would be designed with various poles and whatnot, we did not get that technical information to be able to do that. However, we understand that we will be able to install the traffic signal with or without the easement. So that's our current understanding. Wasn't probably the best decision because when we met with with Si and Chris, Preston and Franz, it was, it was reminded that if you've got somebody that wants to sell easements, you need to go and buy them when you can buy them. And and we didn't at the time, but we were going aggressively to work that direction. We are aggressively looking for contractors to provide the work for this project. It's a tough time right now, but we are are committed to investing in that, in Meben Oaks. We're really proud of the Meben Oaks and the Meben Town Center community. And we're really proud of the first-class design and and the work we've done out there. And we're going to continue to do the right thing and keep investing in a first-class nature out there, so. Mr. Bradley, does that answer question?
When you, when would you expect it? I mean, I know, I know scaring the contractors still the iffy part, but when would you expect the development to be done? I mean, the traffic lights all to be done in in conjunction to the completion of the glass remaining apartment?
We're hopeful this year, sir. We're very hopeful. We're going to get, we're aggressive on getting it, getting it built. I, I'm, I can't provide a hundred percent guarantee. I wish I could with this this current climate, and especially with the pandemic and and the lack of trades is, they've made layers, liars out of us too many times. So but we are going to continue to work on it. And as Mr. Stover suggested, we, we, we didn't, we didn't stop investing. We invested significantly in the construction of the the townhome roads as well as the apartment streets. And and most importantly, we have constructed Cameron Lane as a divided access boulevard and at our expense. And it's going to provide a great traffic channel for for the homeowners there in the Villas as well as others that get to get over to Meben Oaks Road. So we, we're, we believe in it, and we're going to keep doing a great job out there.
The, I got a, I got a problem in timing. You know, like Tim said, Councilman Bradley, I think we should have been further along than we are. However, you know, so if you, you can, we get the bond, we can, it's pretty much a guarantee that it's going to happen.
Yes, sir.
So that's the thing. But I do have a comment. The backside of those units that's facing one nineteen Fifth Street.
Yes, sir.
Is there going to be a lot of burns? Or I hadn't looked at the ordinance, but is there going to be some burns or or stuff separating them from the road?
I I don't know specifically, but I know that my partner, Mark Michael, we believe, we're very big fans of landscaping, and it's going to be landscape built nicely from the south. Right now, it's a being two-story of homes. It's, it looks a little bit, looks a little taller than they are.
Yeah, I, I, and I think we missed the boat by by not having ordinances where we move the, the a lot more setback, particularly on a main thoroughfare like we have on on Fifth Street. particularly on a main thoroughfare like we have on, on Fifth Street. I have been meaning to contribute that as a UDO change, but we need to look, that is, that is not a good front for, for any road unless there's a lot of landscaping between the, I don't know how, I don't know how you sell a house when, without a lot, some buffers and that kind of stuff before the, before things. So anyway, that had anything to do with this. Let's, let's get back to this.
I'll just, rest assured that, and we've got to do the widening in that area. So that, that work has to be done first, but then after that, rest assured, we will be landscaping and it will be attractive. So.
Scott, on your, on the roundabout that you have?
Yes, ma'am.
You will, you guys will be landscaping that, that roundabout and making it the boulevard. I remember working on a project with you for many, many years. And is that what you plan to do?
Yes, yes.
Boulevard?
Yes, yes. And then, and then the, our communities will be responsible for maintaining that area within the, within the meetings of the boulevard. So yes, we, that will be further into the project. But yes, it will be, it'll be landscaped and it'll look very attractive. And we'll work with Cy and staff as we go along doing, building those with any plantings as well as any monumentation.
I did ride out there and the streets look good as far as you putting in the infrastructure. So I thank you for putting the infrastructure in because many times we don't have the streets put in.
Right.
And we have to deal with that afterwards. So thank you for putting those streets in. But, but I did notice the boulevard and I was wondering, would you landscape it? So thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, let's get back to the, this consideration and final plat. Cy, do you have any additional comments?
No, sir. I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Cy, just for the clarity for people who are not familiar with this project or this process, we're not approving this new development this evening. This is all previously approved. How long ago?
This was a special use permit and rezoning that was approved in 2018 for 188 townhomes and 350 apartments. And the 350 apartments are spread across nine buildings. And again, two of those face the existing apartment complexes, as Ms. Hadley, Councilwoman Hadley referred to. This includes a divided boulevard with a roundabout, multi-use path and substantial private amenities for the residents of both the apartments and the townhomes. And then the aforementioned transportation improvements on South Fifth Street, North Carolina 119. And I, I do want to reemphasize Mr. Wallace's point that by opening Cameron Lane, again, we need to have that plat before you, before any townhomes can be permitted because there's no access to Meven Oaks Road without it. It will allow the residents of the villas on Fifth to access Meven Oaks Road without having to go on North Carolina 119. So, and we will confirm with our engineering staff that all the roads have been, meet city standards in order to do that.
How do we get, how did we get to, I'm just still a little concerned how we got here. Because as John pointed out, this was done in 2018, but the discussion was pretty implicit about the traffic light. So what happens now if we've got a $600,000 bond and easements can't be obtained, widen the road? Do we just do away with the light? I mean, now we've already approved these. They've been built. We've got all these homes conglomerate there and we're expecting an outlet that had a light, which would also improve the Rokalo exit entrance and exit. What happens now if we, we can't get it done because of law, loss of easements or lack of easements? Or it just seems to me that, I mean, this should have been called a long time ago. We were told it was held up because the DOT wouldn't let them start. It doesn't sound like they've started.
Well, DOT wouldn't let them start construction. That is correct.
They could start easement and contractor securing and everything else that goes with planning a project to get completed.
I can't disagree with you, Mr. Bradley. What I can say is regarding the traffic signal installation, the DOT engineers, both the Cogestion Management and Division Seven have looked at different options. And as was referred to, there are other options that don't require easement acquisition to realize the traffic signal without the easements, with one exception, because the control box does have to be placed on an easement on one of those properties. But otherwise, there are other options where the poles can be installed without going on what is now private property.
But didn't we, wasn't there turn lanes as part of the, as part of the drawing?
Have to go back.
At the traffic light? I mean, so you got to, I, I come out London Lane.
I thought they were going to widen the road from Bonanza to.
That's included in the bond. It's going to be widened. Anyway, that, that.
Oh, it makes me, it just makes me uncomfortable that we have these approvals, but all of a sudden we're five feet in, five feet deep in and have a, we don't have the, the infrastructure started that we expected to be started.
To add to Tim's concerns, what guarantees do we have, whether it be the installation of the lights or a timeline?
So the bond.
Yeah.
The bond, the bond is the main guarantee. In terms of the timeline, it would be the delay of the apartment construction or the prohibition on apartment construction until the bond is posted. And at such time with any sureties, whether it's DOT or the city, if there's a concern about failure of delivery, then that institution will call the bond and install it themselves. In this case, it would be DOT.
All right.
How do we, what do we learn from this for the next project?
So Mr. Mitchell and I have had a lot of conversations about making sure that we tie all improvements, whether they're amenities or off-site transportation improvements, not to phases, but to the number of units. And making that very clear and making those thresholds very clear in the approval. There's been other discussions that we've had about additional measures, additional tools and instruments that we can employ through the developer agreement or subdivision improvement agreement, or that could be tied to existing bonds to not be in the situation.
Well, you guys, you guys do a fantastic job, Cy, and goodness knows you got a lot of stuff to keep up with, with the growth that we've seen. And, but it, it is a little concerning. I mean, when you, you know, when you talk about specific things that we've approved on developments, like they're going to have 60% rock on the front or the driveway is not going to be but 22 feet, so and so. I mean, all these things we talk about. It, it, it's a little disconcerting that when you think maybe they're not being tracked so that we know that when the developers completed their job, everything that we originally agreed to is there.
So I'll try to answer that one. In this case, staff has been tracking it. The question earlier was what can we learn from it? From a city perspective, all requirements were followed. The, the original approval from council, if you can go back to the various phases, was Phase T1 could be, could be constructed without the signal light and the street widening phases. It, it stated and that the, the signal light and street widening did not have to be installed until Phase T1 is completed. So we're still on schedule with what council approved years back at the approval of this. What has changed now is the developer has met with city staff and has requested because of the delay from NC DOT last September and supply chain issues and the fact that he has built the entire network. Because if you look at this map that's on the screen now, he originally was required to build the streets in with phases. So when Phase T1 is built, he would build those parts, he would build, construct those parts of the street. He was not required to construct Phase T3 until, as a road, until he, or Phase T2, I should say, until he moved into that section. So he, we are tracking it and it is going along as approved and scheduled by city, by city council. The developer is requesting due to the bullet points, the final three bullet points or sub-bullet points, that the section of the UDO that allows adjustments to occur to occur because of the unique nature. But that is a very valid question that you ask or comment you are making. But we have stayed on top of this, the city staff. This, we've just reached a point now where either Meven Town Center does not build the rest of T2, T3, T4 until the Fifth Street work is completed or we interact, or we enact Article 2, Section 19 of the Meven UDO.
So and city staff's recommendation is we let them go ahead and, and build those.
I'll let the city manager speak on that.
So I'll double down on this. The staff has been on top of this for many months now. The staff has been telling the developer, you're getting close to the maximum number of lots that you can develop without the signal going in. That has happened, I would say, over and over again. We started looking at it slightly different when DOT said because of Villas on Fifth widening and lane closings and NC DOT right next to it also trying to finalize and get final pavement down. They did not want him to start his project. I'm with you wholeheartedly. It would have been nice if the easements would have been acquired during that time. They were not. In the last couple of weeks, as we have been trying to figure out, are we going to shut them down from building, which is where we were headed, or are we going to reevaluate this? We looked at the final plat and it was coming to you tonight. I've ridden on all those streets multiple times and we never anticipated all of the streets being built in the, basically the early phases. That never happens. The Villas on Fifth connection is completely connected. Airport Road has been expanded, extended. Cameron Boulevard has been completely built. So traffic now has access from Faust through Villas on Fifth to the Boulevard and directly to Meven Oaks Road. The apartments that are on Airport Road in Fifth Street have access directly to Airport Road and now have an option to go through Cameron Boulevard to Meven Oaks Road. So we never anticipated this traffic pattern happening as the project was approved. We all agree we wish we weren't here, but we are here. He did commit to putting the bond in. And this project may cost him more than he originally thought by having to use, I call them the metal strain poles instead of the wooden poles with guide wires on them. Once we analyzed all that, once we saw the roads were done, he said he was trying to get the plat for Cameron Boulevard to be recorded tonight. Surveyors and engineers and everybody in development is very busy in today's world. He has committed to having that to you next month for a final plat review. And so after we re-reviewed the UDO, we thought this made some sense. This is different than what we have done in the past. I will completely agree with you. But this project has happened different than in the past. And we decided that it should be on your agenda tonight. We should not just make that decision as a staff. We should let everybody know what is going on.
Chris, do you have a copy of the approval letter by any chance that we can see? Because I remember working on that and it's very, very detailed to make sure that we meet all the other things that he had agreed to do in those different phases. So it may would help if the council would see the approval letter from 2018.
I mean, they have it. They weren't quite prepared to put it on the screen. But this project has gone well other than this. Like I said, it's very, very rare for a developer to actually build all of the streets up front, tie them all in. And for us to have the interconnectivity, we were dreaming of for Cameron Lane just, you know, eight years ago. So despite the bumps that we are having right now, I, I think he has done a good job getting the other roads built. And we thought a little bit of leeway to get the signal done since all of the other roads were built up front made some sense.
Aren't, I mean, the other roads sort of necessary for him to put his project in?
Yeah, but.
And internal roads.
So he could have though not done the interconnection and just.
Ones we're getting, ones we're getting ready to prove now, they couldn't be approved or built without the internal roads start.
So the ones he's approving now, or do you have units on any of those? I don't think he has any units on any of those. So basically, those roads you see there are all built, the water and sewers in. As always, the last coat of asphalt's knocked down, but there are no units built there. So he could now start in there.
That's the ones we're looking at approving now.
Yes, sir.
Under what circumstances would this come before us again in a few months? What would be a milestone that he could hit or miss that could bring us here again?
So with townhome developments, there are one of two ways that they can be developed. One is by the way Mr. Wallace is proposing, which is dedicating right of way. And then the townhome units themselves are approved as minor plats or minor subdivisions and Meven and our unified development ordinance. Any subdivision of land under three acres in the area qualifies as a minor subdivision that must meet all the city ordinance requirements that can be approved at a staff level. The next opportunity would be when the Cameron Lane plat comes before you. Currently, the plat before you does not provide access to Meven Oaks Road. Does not complete Cameron Lane, does not provide that first phase to implement the Cameron Lane Transportation Improvement Plan or Small Area Plan, Thoroughfare Plan and provide that east-west connection. So that will, ideally, the next opportunity will be in one month.
The plat does not, but the roads are open. Technically.
Yes, they are. Some of us have driven it.
So, yes, Councilman Hadley, the, to your point, and this is a very detailed letter and you should know because you wrote it. The applicant has committed to completing the traffic signal at the intersection of Highway 119 and Meven Airport Road and London Lane with all associated traffic improvements, including pedestrian crossings prior to the completion of all Phase T1 townhouses as submitted on the phase plan, which is this plan here. And then the other relevant bullet point is Cameron Lane and Meven Airport Road shall be connected by the developer with the development of apartments five, six, and seven. That has not occurred yet. If the apartments have not occurred. If townhome units 38 through 56 are developed prior to apartment buildings five, six, and seven, and they have been, then Bonanza Lane and Meven Airport Road shall be looped by the developer, which is what he is proposing to do. But Cameron Lane was not included in that, in that condition.
Are there any other questions from the council? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion. From somebody.
After, after the explanation, I'd go with staff's recommendation. Make a motion. We'll give a staff's recommendation.
To approve the final plat as presented. All right, we have a motion. That was second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Cy. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. All right, let's take a five-minute break. All right, let's take a five-minute break. Presentation of the budget and I believe we're going to presentation of the budget and I believe Daphna is going to be the presenter. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, you stole my thunder.
Well, you told me that this morning, so
No, I did tell you.
I was going to save you.
So, we are doing things a little bit different this year. As y'all know, Budget and Meven started back in November. This is the first year we have used our Tyler software, which is our in-house software to complete the budget. And the budget process has gone well. It's been a tough year getting all the numbers to come together, but in the end, as required by state law, we do have a balanced budget presentation to council and the public. Daphna Schwartz is our finance officer. Daphna's been here. This is, she came during the last budget as basically it was already started and probably a lot of it done with the previous finance officer. Daphna and her staff have worked very hard this year on preparing the budget. They work much harder on all the preparation. We regularly meet, talk about details, how to balance the budget in the end, but the huge majority of the work is done by the finance officer and her staff. So, I did ask Daphna to make the presentation tonight to council and the public. Daphna?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Let's see if I can work this new thing. So, tonight, I'm here to present the manager's recommended budget. And so, first, let's look at some budget highlight. The total expenditures for both the general and utility fund are 38.2 million. The utility capital reserve fund, which is where we have our system development fees, is estimated to have revenue of 1.6 million. Personnel-related increases included 3% for a cost of living adjustment, 20% for health insurance, three-quarters of a percent for general employees retirement, and 1.06% increase for law enforcement employees retirement. The retirement rates are set by the North Carolina State Treasurer's Office. For revenues, the property tax rate and the fee for garbage and recycling will remain unchanged for fiscal year 2223 and water and sewer rates will increase 6%. So, first, let's look at the general fund recommended budget. The general fund accounts for resources not required legally to be accounted for in any other fund. And the general fund includes services that cannot be operated as a business enterprise and rely on tax dollars as their primary source of revenue. So, the city has 17 general fund departments that can be grouped into six primary function areas. And as you can see from the slide, over one-third of every dollar is spent in the general fund goes toward public safety, which includes police and fire services. So, the fiscal year 2223 recommended budget for the general fund totals 28.3 million, which is 12.9% higher than the fiscal year 2122 original budget and 1.7% higher than the amended fiscal 2122 budget as of May 1st. The increase in fiscal year 2122 budget is primarily attributed to carryovers from the prior year, which were at $1.2 million, and a transfer to the Lake Michael Dam spillway replacement capital project ordinance for $908,000. Comparing the recommended fiscal year 2223 budget to the revised 2122 budget, as I said before, it's just a modest increase of 1.7%. Capital and personnel expenditures, as well as debt service, are the primary drivers of the increase. As you see from the departmental side of the slide, there's approximately $333,000 increase in the police department and that results from funding a full year of four police officer position, police patrol positions that were approved in the current year for January 1 start. And the fire department budget is increasing $950,000 and that includes purchasing a fire engine for $650,000 and funding six new firefighter positions to start on January 1st, 2023. Debt service will increase about $272,000. That's for purchasing rolling stock and debt for the Holt Street-Greenway project. The increase you see in administration is primarily attributed to diversity training and funds for the racial equity advisory committee. Decreases in several departments is what kept the overall budget increase to a minimum and the reductions are related to one-time expenditures, primarily capital in the departments' fiscal year 2122 budget that are not repeated in the 2223 budget. So, the 2223 budget includes eight new positions and four reclassifications. The new full-time positions include the six firefighter positions I mentioned earlier and those positions will start January 1st. A park superintendent and an inspections permit specialist. The full-time reclassifications included recreation superintendent, supervisor of athletics, parks, operations, and maintenance supervisor, and an automotive mechanic. And the mechanic is a combination of two part-time positions, creating a full-time position. The total costs of the positions are $545,935. And as I mentioned earlier, all positions include the 3% cost of living increase as well as health insurance retirement increases. That's for all personnel. So, in order to continue providing outstanding services to the community, the city will continue investing in infrastructure and other capital needs for fiscal year 2223. What you see on the slide is a list of capital projects in the 2223 budget that were over $100,000. And many of these items will be funded by debt and I'll get to that in a future slide. So, next year will be a transitional year for the Meven Main Street program. An amount of $100,000 has been included in the budget to work towards achieving full Main Street designation in August of 2023. City staff will remain heavily involved during the initial phase of this transition year, while seven members of the Meven Downtown Associate Community Steering Committee will serve as the provisional board of directors. Of the to-be-created 501(c)(3) entity. This transitional year will result in the 2324 budget process authorizing the commitment to full designation of the Meven Model Main Street program. So, outside agencies are a minor part of the budget appropriations. However, these agencies provide essential services and quality of life value for citizens of Meven. None of these agencies requested an increase for 2223, so they're all remaining at the same level of funding as they are this year. So, now we'll talk about our revenues in the general fund. The top four revenues are property taxes, sales taxes, and other funding sources are debt proceeds and appropriated fund balance. So, the city of Meven continues to experience growth in the primary revenue sources of property tax and sales tax. And a growing population has naturally contributed to the growing tax base that helps Meven retain its modest tax rate while providing exceptional services. The 2223 tax base for Meven is projected to grow 97.2 million or 3.8% to 2.6 billion. And each penny on the tax rate is equivalent to approximately $261,000 in revenue. If you take property tax and sales tax revenues out of the equation, as well as debt proceeds and fund balance, all other general revenues collectively would represent a 3.48% increase over the 2122 amended budget. So, again, overall, the budget reflects a 1.7% increase in revenues when compared to the 2122 amended budget. And this modest increase is because there is a significant amount of fund balance appropriation in the current year, which again, as I mentioned previously, was due to carryovers of 1.2 million and the Lake Michael Dam spillway. At $908,000. So, property taxes represent 48% of the general fund revenues. And again, we are not recommending a tax rate increase for this year. Sales tax represents the city's second-largest revenue source in the general fund at 19.75%. Sales tax revenues have increased over the past several years with a strengthened economy and also because the state expanded sales tax to include additional services. And the positive trend has continued during the current year. So, the city has experienced an average of 34.51% year-over-year increase in sales tax. And so, the FY 2223 sales tax estimates reflect this positive trend, albeit a little bit more modest with a 29.81% over the current budget and 6.14% over year-end projections. And the fund balance. Fund balance is simply explained, the amount of assets exceeding liabilities in the general fund. These funds enable the city to meet financial obligations and to react to emergencies or opportunities that may arise. So, the city evaluates any decision to use fund balance and carefully plans its use in advance. And so, the current budget recommends including a full fund balance appropriation of about $2.1 million and this adheres to the city's fund balance policy. The appropriation is the maximum permitted under the policy and that will leave unassigned fund balance at 50% of general fund expenditures. So, the city plans to fund one fire engine, excuse me, with debt proceeds as well as the rolling stock that you see on the slide and the Holt Street-Greenway. Under the proposed debt payments, they're only totaling $272,000 for 2122 because Piedmont Electric Membership Corporation has agreed to fund the fire engine for $520,000 at a 1% interest rate and they do not require us to start paying until the fire engine is actually delivered, which we don't think will happen for two years. So, we don't need to budget that debt payment. So, now we'll move on to the utility fund. The, this is our enterprise fund. It operates similarly to a business and is self-sustaining with user rates. So, the recommended budget for the utility fund totals $9.9 million, which is a approximately 48% decrease from the current budget of 19.1 million and a 4.4% decrease from the original budget. The utility fund reflects a decrease in all expenditure categories except personnel, where two new full-time maintenance technicians at the cost of $107,000 are added for next year. So, during this fiscal year, the city refunded a debt for $3 million and transferred 3.5 million to a capital project fund ordinance for the Wharf expansion. And additionally, 1.9 million was budgeted for the GKN pump station reroute, which was part of the revenue bonds. So, those transactions will not be repeated in 2223, which is why the budget So those transactions will not be repeated in twenty-two, twenty-three, which is why the budget appears to be decreasing greatly. We're also not proposing issuing any new debt in this fund for next year. So as I mentioned previously, this includes two new full-time maintenance technician positions. And the capital items over one hundred thousand dollars are listed there. I will make a note that since the manager's recommended budget came out, we received numbers from Graham, the city of Graham, for their wastewater treatment plant and their. Water treatment plant, which we own part of, and so this budget will increase slightly. When we bring you the final budget on June seventh, and it will increase approximately a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
The grams, the city grams improvement is three forty now?
There's, so the, the capital is actually going to be reduced to thirty thousand, and it's the operations that are going up.
Just for an educational opportunity, I'm guessing they're paying something similar, the similar three forty or Graham, excuse me.
Well, Graham operates the, yeah, if you, fifty percent of the water treatment plant, and I think we're twenty-three percent of the wastewater treatment plant is our ownership in that.
Graham Meven Water Plant is, and the reservoir is jointly owned by Graham and Meven. And originally, it was a two-third, one-third relationship with Graham paying two-thirds of the operating cost and Meven one-third. Several years ago, we asked that to become fifty-fifty, and so we are in the process of making payments to Graham. And we own half of the plant and the property and the reservoir and the supply. Graham does operate the plant. We're almost like a silent partner. So the staff that operates the water plant is all on the grand payroll and every month. Based on the operating cost ends up being split based on how much water comes to Meven and how much water comes to Graham. And then the capital costs are split fifty-fifty. And with the advent of the North Carolina Commerce Park, we entered into a similar relationship and. So that sort of started the discussion. The Commerce Park is served by sewer from Graham wastewater plant. The water customers, it depends which city you're in, all of the sewer from the Commerce Park is treated by Graham. After that, we entered into a relationship contract with Graham to roughly purchase twenty-two, twenty-three percent of the plant. And we have a seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon a day agreement that they will treat from Meven outside of the Commerce Park. So we do participate in the operation and the capital cost of both of those plants.
So now we look at the utility revenues by source, and this being an enterprise fund, it's primarily sales and services that account for eighty-five percent. Of the revenues. And the twenty-two, twenty-three recommended budget includes eight point four million in revenues from water and sewer charges, which is an increase of eleven point three percent. New customer growth is expected to be approximately four hundred residential homes and. The continued customer growth rate and an increase in the water and sewer rates. Account for the, the rise in sales and services. So you'll recall, this past fall, the city issued revenue bonds to fund the Wharf renovation. And the GKN pump station rehabilitation and to retire three point five million dollars in debt. So before we were able to have that approved, we had a feasibility study to see if we would be able to support. If our current and future customer base would be able to support the debt. And so the study revealed that we could support the debt, but that our water and sewer rates would need to increase to be able to do so. So last year, our rates for water and sewer increased ten percent. And this year, the consultant had recommended it increased six percent. And so that is why we've got a six percent increase in here to support the Wharf renovation debt. The increase, well, the average customer uses about four thousand gallons a month. So based on that, the monthly increase for an average customer would be three dollars and forty cents a month. So we've talked about the eight point four million in revenues, increasing eleven point three percent. There is a decrease in intergovernmental revenues, and that is just due to moving engineering, construction, inspection fees. Excuse me, to the permit and fees category. So that's just a administrative change. The appropriated fund balance in the current year consists again of the three point five million transfer to the expansion capital project ordinance. And so wanted to explain why that was there. And the, for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, despite the six percent increase in rates. There remained a approximately million dollar gap between revenues and expenses. And normally, in the past, we would appropriate some of the capital reserve fund to pay for capital items. But right now, the city is focused on building up fund balance in the reserve fund to lower the debt that will be necessary. For the Wharf expansion project, and so we're not recommending doing that this year. And we are recommending using fund balance appropriation to close that funding gap. And this appropriation is in line with the fund balance policy. So now we'll talk about the capital reserve fund. This is where we account for the system development fees. Which are estimated to be one point six million next year, which is the twenty-two point three percent increase over the current year. And growth, the growth projections support this estimate. And again, we're focused on building up balance here, so we are not suggesting to use any of the, the funds next year. So the next step in this process is, at the next meeting, we'll hold a hearing on the budget and hopefully present a final budget to this council for approval.
Any questions from the council?
He had three percent cost of living for staff. Was there any merit?
There is merit included. It's an average of two point seven five.
Mr. Mayor. Don't interrupt y'all, but the three percent though, is that three percent in addition to the earlier three percent that the council approved earlier this year?
Yes, sir.
Wanted to comment on the Main Street program and the hundred thousand dollars in the budget for that. I'm very excited about that Main Street program. Obviously, we're not voting on that tonight, but I'm encouraged that we're headed in that direction. As I got familiar with the program, I was very encouraged by the work that's been done, and we have interacted with Diane Young, who's done an excellent job in that regard. I think we're gonna be driving that executive committee to hire someone using those funds. I think that's extremely exciting. I've heard repeatedly, and it's my own personal thoughts, that we want to hire somebody like Diane. She's done an excellent job. I think she's really brought. She's brought people together with, as a real consensus builder. She's brought some outside perspectives that I think have been refreshing. And she also has demonstrated a lot of experience beyond events, which I think is valuable to our downtown. I do want to recommend, we have discussed this in previous meetings, that because of the importance of this hire. That we make it in the budget to be, or defined as a two-year promised funding. So we have an earlier opportunity to evaluate the success of that hire and of that program. In the previous budget discussion, we had thrown around three years or five years. I'm personally recommending that we make it two years because I think this hire is so critical for that program. And that would give us a great opportunity, and I would be all in on extending that with the right person. And if not, it would give us a logical opportunity to reevaluate. So just wanted to make those comments.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, just to be sure, the, the general fund has eight new employees, and then the utility fund has two. And that's all, or any other city somewhere that has more?
No, there were, there were reclassifications in the general fund, but not new.
How many current employees are in the general? Current Meven City employees?
A hundred and, give me a minute, it's in the.
That material was in the budget document, but I believe it's approximately a little over a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-four springs my mind.
Is the general fund employees?
I think that's total.
That's total.
My question is, what's the distinction between general fund employees and, and the utility employees?
I don't have that information, but it is broken down in the budget document that's in the packet tonight.
Mr. Mayor, just one more thing, if we could maybe get a more layman explanation, but if I followed some of the narrative correctly. There's a one point seven percent increase projected in revenues, about a twelve point nine percent projection higher in spending, general fund. Both those are general fund.
No, they're, they're both one point seven.
So I think what you're talking about is, so the, the budget always has to balance, the revenues have to equal the expenditure. The original budget that was adopted last year would be a twelve point nine, the amended budget is the one point seven.
In, in higher expenditures?
Both.
Well, I got the one point seven higher in revenues, but that's for this coming year, right?
That's for one point seven percent higher than the current amended budget, twelve point nine.
Yeah, twelve, so yeah, twelve point nine percent. So the twenty-two, twenty-three recommended budget. Is twelve point nine percent higher than the original budget for this year. And one point seven percent higher than the amended budget for this year.
Current budget.
Yes, the current budget.
As it stands, yes.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, looking on page fifty-one and fifty-two of the budget document, general fund presently has a hundred and thirty-four employees that will increase to a hundred and forty-three. The water and sewer fund has twenty-two employees that will increase to a hundred and twenty-four, so my numbers were off. Approximately in the current year, we have, I'm sorry, in the actual current year, we have a total of a hundred and fifty-six employees, and it's proposed to increase to a hundred and sixty-seven.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, just pressing on those you just read, going one thirty-four to one forty-three? Well, if my math's right, that's nine. I thought you said eight.
The number is eight, though.
The number is eight.
All right, any other questions?
Just, just to comment, I think staff did a great job in taking input and working the numbers and hitting it down to where it's manageable.
And for somebody who's gone through their first budget session, those three working meetings were extremely helpful.
All right, thank you, Daphne.
I was just gonna echo that, and I wanted to commend the, the actual format. This was my first budget session and being able to follow along, and then again, being able to take all of the department heads' requests and actually make it work without requiring a tax increase. I, I don't know if everyone else was following those meetings as closely as obviously we were, but it wasn't looking like that wasn't going to happen. So thank you very much for all your magic and hard work, and, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Director. Thank you, staff.
Mr. Mayor, I would remind everybody, this is the manager's recommended budget. The public hearing for the budget will be at the next meeting, June sixth at six P M. There may be some minor changes between now and then. If there are, that would be, that will be very clear in the budget package. And if you all or anybody else has any questions, feel, feel, please feel free to reach out to me.
So the difference that we saw in the general fund is actually the auto mechanic is two part-time positions coming together as one. And we don't normally count the part-time positions, and we were only counting full-time positions there. And so that looked like an additional position, but it was actually a reclassification. So that's what that was, that additional number.
Yes.
Tom, it'll come to you, buddy. It, it, so it did to me, so I'm sure, I'm sure it will. All right, thank you, Daphne. Thank you, staff, for everything you've done. Okay, downtown exterior improvement grant awards, Mr. Stover.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm before you again to bring to you, I think it's four new downtown exterior improvement grant awards and one amended request. So brief overview of the program allocated in last year's budget, fifty thousand dollars to downtown exterior improvements. Program was formally adopted at the November council meeting. The application windows, it remains open. Applicants must have two quotes, property owner approval if you are not the property owner. Any off-site commitments must require written permission from that property owner, including the city. Take the form of an encroachment agreement or promise to provide one. And any changes to the application, this is important for this evening, must, after awarded, must be pre-approved by staff, and at our discretion, we will bring that back to council if it seems to be a significant change. Properties almost lie within the area identified in the downtown vision plan. The city provides fifty-fifty match up to ten thousand dollars upon, as a reimbursement grant upon provision of receipts. And the funds are available first come, first served. To date, we have funded twenty-six thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and thirty-one cents to six applicants throughout the downtown region. And these are the four broad categories the grant supports. As I said, there are four projects before you this evening. One is for one eleven North Third Street to repaint the exterior building walls and trim. This project totals eight thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents based upon the two quotes that were provided. This is, of course, not that building, but this is the applicant's, as they say, inspiration photo of what they want the building and kind of the color schemes that they'll be going for. So a whitewash with black trim for the building, which will be substantially different from what's there today. The second request is for two hundred North Third Street. The proposal is twofold. One is to paint a mural on the white face of the building that you see here. And then to place two picnic benches on the property for folks to recline. That, that request totals two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And here you see the two renderings that were provided to city staff to review. And again, we make no recommendations on this. This is at the discretion of the council. It'll be one of these two renderings, though, and then example of the picnic bench that'd be installed on the property.
How does picnic benches improve the? It's not all the money, so it's no big deal, but how does that improve the, the, the intent was to improve the facades and those kind of things?
I think actually, one of the outdoor seating was identified as one of the four broad categories. We anticipated this to be used more for outdoor dining or to grab, grab coffee, but it is a place to.
I skipped that slide.
And as you'll see to the right on that picture, I mean, the benches are gonna be under the trees, so it'll be a nice place for people to.
There you go.
Cool their jets.
There you go.
That particular storefront currently will have like food trucks and things come. As a part of some of our downtown events, if I'm not mistaken, so that would be used for that.
I remember.
Sorry, can you comment on the mural policy? I mean, I'm not familiar with what requirements are in place. And I don't, I don't think we're really approving a mural tonight. We're just approving funding for exterior improvements.
Sure, so we have no mural policy. We have no artwork policy unless it falls into two broad categories, if it is a sign or if it is obscene. So we're hopeful that the mural won't be either of those.
Not an advertisement.
Yes, sir, and. And and we will review it, just to double check those two things, but there's not a formal review by staff, there's no permit. It would be reviewed as part of this program to ensure that it's consistent with what the council has approved.
All right. But if they were spending their own money, they could just get this put up and not even speak to us.
I believe so, it's on private property.
Long as it wasn't a sign or an advertisement.
The U D O makes it very clear, if it's a, what you consider a work of art, that cannot be considered, any piece of it as a sign, then the building owner, property owner can put up a mural. But it cannot be a sign, a part of it can't be a sign, or else it then moves back into the sign ordinance, or a portion of it may.
There, thank you.
The mural that's on, I think it's, one of the, one of the murals looks like it's.
Oh, Rice Building.
Yeah, fading really bad. Is there any intent of, or any interest in updating it or fixing it?
For which one?
I think, was it Rice's?
On side of Rice on Fourth Street, Fourth Street facing east.
I've spoken with the owner and encouraged them to consider pursuing these funds to do so. Yes. Yes.
Good, all right, any other questions, Si?
Thank you for reaching out.
Still got two more. We also have a proposal for one eighteen West Clay Street to repoint brick on the rear and alley sides, as well as part of the facade. That totals, that request totals three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Brick repointing is not cheap. And then finally, a proposal to repaint the building exterior and, and replace one sign at one twenty-three, he's Center Street. It will be the sign that is along the US seventy or Center Street corridor. The other sign will be coming down. And the sign will be lowered to bring it into conformity. Right now, it's just above twelve feet and it will come down and, and to bring it into conformity. And despite what you see on this image, it'll be, retain the two posts, it won't be on a single post. And their request totals four thousand three hundred eighty dollars and twenty-five cents. Finally, we have an amended request for one oh eight and one-ten West Clay Street. The owner's painter came back with a revised quote, they've had a misunderstanding. And they have amended their request for an additional one thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars. We have reviewed both quotes, this is still far under the competing quote. So it, which was accurate, we've confirmed that with the owner as well. And so we have, we're bringing this to you as well.
And with these requests, how much money, if these are all approved, how much money would that leave in the fund? I think it's three thousand dollars?
Yes, sir, so these requests will total twenty thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, leaving three thousand two hundred five dollars and forty-four cents in this fiscal year's grant funds.
Make a motion to award the twenty thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cent in the Downtown Exterior Improvement Grants.
Second.
Hats off to you, Si, and your crew, that this looks like this program's working pretty well.
Well, I really, well, thank you very much, sir. I, to echo Mr. White's words before, Diane Young has been a critical part of shepherding a lot of these folks to make sure we have a complete application packages and making sure that they know that despite only having one or two things left to do, they, we really need those things. And they're getting, she's getting them across the finish line and onto your packets, so thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I need to ask for one more request. We talked about having the public hearing at the June sixth council meeting for the fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three budget. I would request that you make a motion for the public hearing to be held at the June sixth, six P M council meeting.
Oh, okay, so move, add a motion. Got a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, if nothing else, we have some announcements. Memorial Day, city offices will be closed on Monday, May thirtieth.
That does beg a question. June thirteenth, does that start in twenty, this fiscal budget, or does it wait till next fiscal budget? We didn't really say.
My impression was it was starting this fiscal budget. And we will quickly work with Public Works to get some amended garbage schedule and make sure, see if it affects recycling.
And propose U D O amendments, remind everybody to review the materials. Application for planning board. Any others? If not, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, guys.